I'll do right now is welcome everyone to the city council work session on the sixteenth of March two thousand and twenty-two. We've got quite a few of the our visitors from recology and we welcome them, welcome them. We've got two topics this evening. We're going to have a transfer station presentation from recology and then we're going to talk about system development charges and Amanda will be leading us through that discussion with help from I'm sure Heather and others. But again, welcome and so I will call our work session to order this evening. We know that if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, Sal is going to be late tonight.
Oh, he's actually here with us already.
Oh, good. Okay, Sal, I you popped up down at the bottom, so welcome.
I am, thanks, Mayor. I was able to change the time of the other meeting I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Well, we'll go ahead and now just call on our general manager, one, the new general manager, Chris, it's good to have you and Chris and Dave. Chris Chenoweth and myself had an opportunity and to meet with a number of you out in, out in the yard and walk through some of the things that we're going to be talking about. So, Chris, I'll turn the topic over to you and, and, and welcome you and your team.
Thanks, I appreciate it. So what I thought I'd do is Dave is our local historian, if you will, seeing how I'm new to the area, new to the group, so we thought we'd start with him giving some history and we're coming in front of you today. We're not really looking for an action, we just want to do some partnering and informing of changes at the transfer station. So, take it away, Dave.
All right, thank you, Mayor Hill, councilors and staff. Thanks for having us tonight. We're here to talk about some upcoming, upcoming, you know, the upcoming changes to the transfer station. I believe we have a presentation that should magically pop up on your screen unless, unless I need to make that happen. Any, I'm sorry, we, we sent it to Claudia.
Yeah, so Claudia is on the line. How do you want that to happen, Claudia?
I can, I give Chris co-host rights, but I can give you co-host rights, Dave, or if you want me to run it, I can also run it.
I believe Chris is on his phone. I have a, a version that's probably close to the truth, I mean, the most recent version.
I could run it, I don't mind.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, since I'm on my phone and.
Sorry about that. Let me.
Yeah, no worries.
Let me get back to my other screen here. All right, so that's us and we're here. And so if you could forward to the next slide, please. Okay, so I, I did want to introduce Chris Carey. He's our new regional manager. So he's responsible for our operations here in the valley, at the north coast, our metro Portland operations, our three compost facilities, including Rock McMinnville, which is the, what you may have known as historically as Greenland's, so the compost facility that we operate here. Chris is new to recology, but has several years of valuable experience, industry experience in Oregon. I want to introduce Ernie Martin, who is our valley operations manager. He was recently promoted from operation supervisor and he's responsible for our valley collection operations as well as the McMinnville transfer station. And I think I also saw Nick Olheiser here. He's our organics manager for the three compost facilities. So I think that's all of us, but if we have more staff available, if we need to fill out the call, we can get them on the line. So, back over to the transfer station. And my dates may be a little off because I've been hit on the head a lot, but historically speaking, right about nineteen ninety-four, we started building the facility that officially opened, I think in nineteen ninety-six, as a recycling center. It was a depot and reload facility where we baled cardboard and transferred materials that we collected en route to sorting facilities and end markets. So, then in two thousand and one, we, we started taking trash from the public as a po, as a pilot project. Really, that came about because our customers asked us to take trash. They pointed out, it's like, you're the trash company. How, you pick it up from my house, why can't I give it to you here? You're already here and I have trash. So, they also were looking, they would also mention that going to landfill was, was sort of a hassle. It was out of town, it was dirty, there were big muddy trucks there. And so our first slogan was quick, close, clean. This was a sort of a boutique setup for pickup truck loads of trash, lots of mattresses, couches, property cleanups, small home renovation projects. We did not accept large loads there from tip trailers, dump trucks, et cetera. Anybody that came in with a large volume of, of material like that, we would redirect them out to the landfill. So during this time, our prices did not change. We, we opened up with a fifteen dollar minimum, ten dollars a yard, and we left it at that rate for a few reasons. Number one, it was a small operation, so we didn't handle a lot of tons through there. We probably priced it a little high initially and we also had the landfill and their minimum charge working sort of as competition for these small loads. In two thousand and seventeen, the city of McMinnville asked us to divert trash we collect from McMinnville residents away from Riverbend. We remodeled this site to become a true transfer station. So now the route trucks that, that collected from McMinnville customers, instead of going to landfill, came to the transfer station instead. We would start, we would reload that trash into long semi-trailers and transport that waste to Coffin Butte landfill outside Corvallis. With that new addition to our site, we were able to handle about twenty-two thousand tons a year, just from the McMinnville portion of our business. All the rest of the trash that we collected from all the other cities and the rural parts of the county we serve, were still going to the landfill. As, as you might recall, in June of two thousand and twenty-one, we got about three days notice of Riverbend's change in status and we pivoted at the transfer station to accept the additional twenty thousand tons a year that we're collecting from outside McMinnville. We really scrambled our, to, to make those changes. Our number one priority at that point was to make sure we found a way to keep the routes running, get the garbage collected on time. I want to thank the city again for helping us with the emergency provisions of exceptions to our conditional use permit and we had several councilors and staff, including Councilor Garvin, helped us with getting the word out on social media to inform people that yes, there was an option when they heard the landfill was closing. Folks that, that weren't aware that the recycling center was also a transfer station and that it was an option for them, so we really appreciate that help. Then a week later, we got the, a big influx of customers and tons as Riverbend cut off the public self haulers effective July first. So like I said, we scrambled to make all this work on, on what worked, on what was pretty short notice. We made several changes to the traffic pattern and we need, there was a lot more that needs to be done and I think that brings us fairly quickly to the present, but if you have questions more about the history as we go along, let me know. Otherwise, I'd like to turn it over to Chris to what the, what our present situation is. If you could put up the next slide, please, Claudia.
All right, thank you, Dave. I just want to reiterate that these changes that we're talking about right now are with regards to just the public tons. This is not the collection tons that we go out with our vehicles and bring in. This is a change that's going to happen to customers that currently come to the transfer station and dump. So, Dave, thanks for the history. It's always very interesting to see how this all came together, but I want to talk to you about the impacts of that day when they closed and what it means to the transfer station and what it's doing, the pressures it's putting on the rate and the facility itself. So the first impact is the increased public volume. It grew by five times what we were doing prior. That's a, that's a pretty big intact pack in terms of traffic. We're getting more public just in their personal owned vehicles, we're getting more construction type loads that we didn't see before and as a result of this really low rate, we're starting to see some loads come from out of the area, out of our waste shed, I would call it, as far as way as Vancouver, bringing in heavy loads. We've seen it a few times, it's probably an anomaly, but you know, at ten dollars a yard, a dump truck of roofing can come here, pay a guy to drive an hour each way and still be two hundred dollars cheaper than taking it to a metro facility. So that is not the type of activity that any of us would like to see. In addition, the disposal cost grew by almost double, so now instead of taking it to, to Riverbend landfill, it's got to go to, it's got to go to Coffin Butte and that's probably two hours added plus a higher disposal fee at the landfill itself. So it's doubled, almost doubled our, our disposal costs. In addition, with five times the volume come in, we've had to increase the headcount at the transfer station. We've added six employees to handle additional public traffic and in some cases, that's really just trying to keep people from running into each other, that's directing people to, depends what day it is, our open, public dumping area as well as the larger bay. And so that's, that takes more eyes because once you start getting people in backing trailers into different spots and, and high traffic, it, it takes more employees and plus just more employees to move more tons. Larger loads, I talked a little bit about that. We're not just getting the boutiquey loads, as Dave likes to say, and I've never heard anybody regard trash as boutiquey, but I'll take it, we'll run with that. And then the tip fee is, I talked a little bit about that, just the fact that it's the lowest probably in the state at ten dollars a yard. It hasn't been changed since the inception, I think nineteen ninety-four. There's, there's obviously some catching up to do in terms of the rate. And then the other piece of this rate increase is going to help us address the additional stresses on the building, wear and tear. We've got some paving that we need to do, we need to look at it, expanding the building to hold more tons now that we're seeing it come in. So we're, we're actively looking at that and looking to improve the facility to accommodate and future proof it, if you will. So then if you can go to slide four, I'll, I'll talk to you about the fee structure. In the past, we only had one fee, ten dollars a yard. We want to change that to a three fee structure. One, we want to raise, we're going to raise the rate from ten bucks to twenty bucks for the normal type loads that we were getting in. And then we want to go to a medium weight with construction debris at thirty bucks a yard and then at these heavy loads, that's concrete, that's loads of just roofing, those would go to forty bucks a yard. Since, since we're not scaling, having vehicles go across a scale, we're relying on a per yard charge. We hope to and are planning to put scales in, we'd have an inbound and outbound, that's future projects in the next year or two, maybe three, depending on, on how things are looking. So with that, those would be the new rates. These are very similar to rates at other transfer stations around the area. Newburgh has a very similar system and we think by also being close to these rates, very close to these rates, we won't see sort of this, I'm going to go to McMinnville with my trash now because it's ten bucks a yard, I'm going to actually use less fuel and have less impact on the environment because I'm just going to go to the one closest to me because the rates are the same. And so those are the, those are the impacts. We want, we're looking at initiating these fees starting April first and we'll be notifying customers as they come in with, with flyers that say, hey, the rates are changing and this is the new process. And then we're training our team currently on the identification of the light, medium and heavy loads. And I also have them, I have them getting trained on how to identify that. So there's going to be a learning curve in terms of what we say is light, medium, heavy and we anticipate some exciting conversations about that at the transfer station, but it'll be a learning curve and, you know, this team is, is a really good team at the transfer station, so they will be prepared for those conversations. That's what we have, that's the intent. And so if you have questions, Dave and myself are ready to answer those.
Thank you, Chris. Claudia, you can take the slide down and we can get back to full screen. Any, any questions of Chris or Dave from the council? Go ahead, Adam.
Chris and Dave, thanks for coming on tonight. My first question, I have a couple, but my first question would be, how does your, your medium and heavy load rate at the cubic yard translate when you're looking at, you know, standard contractor's dump trailer to what they were paying by the weight when they were tipping out at Riverbend or if they're tipping somewhere else that, that has scale ability versus just a cubic yard? I guess my concern would be if it's coming, you know, maybe they've been saving money since, because they've been getting this, you know, below market rate since June, but now are they going to be paying double what they've been paying the last decade at Riverbend or what's the cost analysis on that?
So they will be paying, they will be paying more definitely because it's not going to be as cheap as Riverbend, just because we now have to handle it and then transport it to Coffin Butte. So right away, you're going to, there's a cost increase associated with that. Now, when we look at construction debris, it is typically the trailers that we see come in that will have wood, sheet rock, construction type debris in it, but also the trailer type, we see that that's typically a heavier, heavier load and that'll be the learning curve that we see. But the rates that we're looking at are very comparable to when you scale at a transfer station similar to ours, meaning our, our handling of the trash and then the proximity to a landfill and then the, the tipping fee at the landfill. Is that, is that helpful? Dave, maybe you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, I was, I was just looking to see what I could pull up in terms of the, the, what the ton rate was at Riverbend for, for public self haul and if you, let's say you brought in three tons at that rate. The, Riverbend had a, had a load rate of nineteen seventy-five was their minimum and twelve dollars and forty-five cents per yard for the five yards or smaller loads. And they had a minimum, they had a charge of, I believe it was sixty-two twenty-five as a minimum charge, if you're paying by the ton and work, I think, I believe it worked out to forty dollars and eighty cents a ton. So if you had a big load that was over five yards, you'd be paying forty dollars a ton to dump it right into the landfill. And as Chris said, transfer station is, is usually going to be significantly more than a landfill direct dump because of that extra processing and transport.
Okay, thank you for that. Is, is Pride up in Sherwood, are they tipped, tipped by cubic yard or are they scaling? Sounded like you said Newburgh's by cubic yard as well?
Yeah, Newburgh doesn't have scales, so they're doing it by the yard and I think Pride has scales. Ernie, do you know that off the top of your head?
I don't, I'll try to look it up real quick.
Yeah, I mean, Pride's in Tuolumne, correct? So that's, that's a fair jaunt way as well. And they're reloading and shipping, I believe, to Coffin as well, but I can find out.
Okay. And then you said probably in the future, eventually you guys will go to a scale system once it's fully built out, updated?
Yeah, it's important that everybody understand, if we go to scales, we need two. We want to scale in and a scale out. If we have one, we've got cars at both ends fighting with each other to try to get across after they dump. So it's a substantial investment to do two. We have one on site that we use to weigh outbound loads, but one more scale and, you know, a scale house would be in addition to that. So we're looking at that. We're also trying to figure out what's the best way to receive the cars so that we're queuing correctly and we're getting people in and out fast. If you guys are ever trying to dump here now on the weekend, you'll understand what I'm talking about in terms of having to wait during those times. So more to come on that as we, as we continue to try to improve the site.
Okay, and that, because you guys have a scale back by like where you check in for trash right now and then you also have a scale over by the Greenland's check-in station, don't you, or no?
So I'm fairly new to that. I think that's correct, right, Ernie?
So we have the active scale over by Greenland's and then we just had another scale installed, it's not complete, but that's one, one of the two scales that we need for the public side. And, and we're trying to figure out the footprint of the transfer station to be able to bring in that second scale to make that happen.
Yeah, so that could be potentially moving the other scale over to where the existing one is and then understanding it. So, okay, so thank you for that correction.
Gotcha.
I wasn't even thinking about our compost facility.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all you, all you guys do, just trying to, knowing the feedback that we're going to get from council on, from our construction community on why their rates are going what they, they will be going to, I just want to have some context to have that conversation with them and to be frank, I'll probably steer that here, guys, way more than anything, but.
And that, and that's fine, I get that. Also, you know, part of the improvements that we're looking at is, is creating enough space to do some C and D sorting so that we can alleviate some of that pressure on construction. I know that's been an ask of you guys in the past and, you know, at ten dollars a ton, we couldn't support that, but with these rates, we can start to support that and expand the footprint and give ourselves some space. When you're sorting, you need, you need a lot more space than we have, so that's, that's in the long-term plan. And I, when I mean long-term, I'm hoping in the next five years, so.
So will we see in a, some sort of building permit for expansion coming for it?
Yeah, if we do anything to the property that requires permit, yes, you'll definitely see it.
Okay. Overall, I'd like to say you guys have done a great job of pivoting and, and getting people in and out. There is some unorthodox traffic flow in there, it seems, when I go on there with the dump trailer, going there with just a pickup bed. The pickup bed is probably maybe even a little bit better than it used to be, just because there's an entry point and exit point and we're both not going in and out the same anymore. But as far as the trailers backing in that area, there's trash trucks in there and the loader's going and you got somebody that can't back a trailer in front of you, it can get a little chaotic, so I definitely feel you're paying on the weekend rushes.
Yeah, it's, it's ideal to be able to separate the public from the commercial traffic for that reason, much bigger truck, much, much bigger payload. So yeah, the risk goes through the roof when we start adding public in with the commercials. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that.
Other than that, I appreciate you guys coming on tonight and I'll reach out if I have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Zach, you had your hand up, but.
We seem to have lost Zach from the call.
Yep, so let's go up to Remy and then I think Zach, he's coming back. So let's go to Remy and then we'll pick Zach up. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here and the presentation. Can you expand a little bit on this construction waste stream diversion that you mentioned earlier? What's your methodology for that? Does it mostly go to recyclers? Are there opportunities to keep any of those goods in the community? Is that more of a mess than anything else? Would you mind educating me a little bit on, on that, that long-term, within five-year plan that you touched upon?
Sure, let me, let me jump in for a second here, just to, for clarification, there's, there's, this is the construction and demolition accepted as garbage rate that we're talking about right now. Construction and demolition recycling is a different program that we'd like to bring to the facility. It was part of our phase three for the development of this site. We had to sort of skip over phase two and dive into the, the trash acceptance part of phase three when the landfill closed, but Chris, maybe you could say more about what the future C and D recovery plans might, might look like on the site?
Sure, so the, the way that other C and D facilities work is they'll grab a dry load, not a putrisable waste, residential waste load that has, you know, wet waste in it. It's a construction debris and then they'll sort typically the really simple way to do it is to hand sort, like pull stuff out physically with a spotter or a, we call them lumpers or, and they would pull out large pieces of wood, metal and any plastics that were marketable, which is a tough one. Wood is really tough these days right now when the mill, S and P, the big S and P mill closed down. It impacted a lot of MRFs or C and D facilities that, that sort dry trash to have super clean wood, meaning no paint, no glue, so no plywood, no press wood. It's really post or pre, from construction sites where they have their extracts from cutting, right? It has to be really clean wood. So that's hampered some of the C and D activity, but those are the things that we would look to do when we have a dry load. We'd want the space to isolate a dry load versus normal trash and be able to sort it and then send those products to market. And it's typically wood and metal that, that are the, the items that are quickly pulled. If we want to get more sophisticated and more expensive, we bring in a sort line and we grab a big load of it with an excavator, spin it over and drop it onto a belt that goes up and then is still sorted by hand, the same type of products. And you can get more that way because you have the assistance of the equipment and a sort line to get through the stuff pretty quickly. So it all depends about what kind of space we have and how sophisticated we want to get, but our intention is recology and waste zero environment is to try to get as much as we can, but we have to work within the footprint that we have and the, and the equipment that we have. Was that helpful?
Yeah, that was wonderful, thank you.
Let's go up to Zach.
Thank you. On the heels of Remy's question, what I heard you say it was in your phase plan, can I ask what type of those C and D waste models you were going for and at what point do you forecast the facility getting there? And I, I'm not going to hold you to it, I just want to, is it, we're in three years, ten years, twenty-five years?
Well, I, I threw out five just to be safe, but getting this rate in place, seeing how the site performs, at the same time, I'm also going to be bringing in, I'll probably put some capital in my budget for next year to bring in some engineering that says, here's what we'd like to do and they're going to say, okay, Chris, this is the space you need, this is the type of building and here's where you can add on or do you need a separate one? We would probably add on because we want to keep everything as tight as we can. So it, you know, it could go pretty quickly if we determine that we want to try to do a, a hand sort where we would isolate a dry load. I don't think we have the space for that yet. So, you know, in a year or two, we'll, in a year, I'll know a lot more and I'll come back to you guys and talk to you about it and say, okay, and you'll, you'll even see it because we'll have a permitted place if we decide to go.
Right.
That route, but that is our goal and it would be, it would be a great location because I don't believe that's happening in Sherwood either route line here. So if, that's exciting for us in terms of it makes sense. So we'd look at volumes and that would also play into the decision of how much space we need in addition to what we have.
The other question I had was, you know, and Dave's history of the facility and your, your company and our good partnership of the city and you guys have been very receptive and always kind of been leaders in the area and, and taking on big projects. Do you, what, what is, do you guys have any sort of projects in the hopper or, or aside from? Do you, what, what is, do you guys have any sort of projects in the hopper or, or aside from C and D, uh, recycling waste stream management and helping with that? Given our, our location in rural and farmland as well as wine country and, and that organic matter. Do you have any exciting projects in, in ways of in organic matter, waste stream, sort of future looking ways to push, push ways to deal with organics?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll answer that in probably three ways. We have our, we have our current composting facility here, but we also have two others, one in Omsfield and one on North Plains. And those take type three, um, compost that have food waste in it. Dave, and so since you guys have to excuse me, I'm still fairly new, but do we take type three here at McMinnville? Is that right?
We're permitted to accept it. Uh, we, we get the occasional load from a special event. But, um, the, the drop off and the collection service are type one.
Okay, and type one, you guys means no food in it, correct, Dave?
That's correct.
Post-consumer food.
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, you know, I don't, I don't quote me or commit me to this, but that is always an option. If we want to take it at the facility, it would be as their space to do that. So we could expand, um, our, our organics, uh, type three program across this waste shed. We are working with, um, a company that's working with some local farmers on, um, taking in some other types of food waste to break it down. It's the Soldier Ant Folks, uh, Chapul Farms. And they're working, we've met, we've met with them a couple of times. We're excited to partner with guys just like that because it's really unique and it's right up our alley in terms of, hey, how do we push the envelope or go out off the guardrails in terms of what's traditionally, um, you know, the business that we do? So that's a really, really small, um, effort right now. And, um, we're still working with them and thinking about what, uh, how we can get the material and still stay within our permit and their permitting. Go ahead, Dave.
Chris, I just was hoping you'd mention next, the, uh, the program with the high school since Zach is talking about, about future and partnerships. Um, if you want to share that story, it might be a good time.
So I don't know it as well and I might screw it up, but Dave.
You want me to do it then?
Yeah, you screw it up, Dave.
That's, that's fine. That is called plausible deniability. That's right. Um, so.
Read me like a book.
For about a year now, we've been working, uh, uh, our, David Beam, our, our operations supervisor, has been working with, uh, the, uh, engineering class at the high school to design a machine that will break up the styrofoam that we accept from the public into small pieces so that we can maximize payload in the debris box. Styrofoam doesn't weigh very much, so the, the best that we can do here, uh, with the equipment we have is to break it up smaller. But, uh, the, uh, the folks at Agilix up in Tiger that accept the styrofoam from us, will take it broken up into tiny, tiny pieces. And if we can, uh, work out a machine, I forget, you remember, Chris, do you remember or Ernie, what they are calling it? It's something like this, the Smasherizer or something.
Something muncher, I.
Oh, man, you guys got to get me in that naming room. That sounds fun.
So.
The Eviscerator.
It's like BattleBots with a, they designed a killer robot. But this is basically, uh, uh, rotating teeth that will mash the styrofoam up into very small pieces that will allow us to fit more into a box, making those halls more efficient. I haven't, I don't know that they have a prototype yet. They've been doing some small-scale work. They've been doing some, some, some computer work. Ernie, do you have an update on where they're, how far along they are on that project?
Yeah, so, so this project started pre-COVID and then obviously got stalled. And so we just supplied, uh, some steel for them, so it's moving forward. They don't have the, uh, anything built right now as far as I know. But they have the materials now to move forward on that, so we should see something in the near future.
Yeah, the, um, the, you know, right now we require in the public to break it up and we might have heard some feedback, but that's not always fun. So, um, this machine would be pretty cool. The thing, the other thing about styrofoam is when you break it up, it tends to blow away. So, um, you know, hopefully this machine has, uh, solved for that as well. I have an old vacuum that I can have them incorporate.
Possibly.
The other thing that we are looking at is an alternative site to take the solid waste, the putrisible waste that comes off route, not the dry waste, but the putrisible waste. And we're, we have sent, we send a load, I think a day, to the Georgia Pacific Facility in Toledo to an initiative that they call Juno. It's part of their R and D research and development of, of how to keep providing fiber for paper. And so what they do, I went down there, took a look at it. They throw, our trucks will come off route, dump wet, the waste right off route out of the cans. They'll then grab it and drop it into a shredder, a $1 million shredder, I believe. So it's not like the one you have next to your desk. And, um, it'll shred it, throw it on a conveyor, and then they bale it into the size of a small car. And then they wrap it in plastic and they ship it about a mile to plant. Then they put it on a conveyor and it goes up in, and it gets cut into pieces and it's dropped into a, um, what's the word?
Auto clave.
Thank you, an auto clave, which cooks it and adds a ton of water and sanitizes it. But in that process, they're able to get 70% of that waste into a fiber-type product because most waste has fiber in it, whether it's organic, um, or not, but a fibrous. And they'll, um, suck all that water out of the fiber and what's left is about 30% of what we gave them. And then they incorporate it into their pulp mix and make paper out of it. So, you know, they're claiming they can do up to 90% and, and they're trying to get there in this testing phase. So it's really got some great, great opportunity and it's, it's in line with our waste zero philosophy. So if we can look to bring them all those tons, um, and council and then the rest of the outlying cities are interested, that is a great alternative to putting in a hole in the ground. So, um, more to come on that, but, uh, it's pretty exciting developments. There's a few other cities in Oregon that are taking, uh, product there for the GP folks, otherwise the Juno project, to play with that. So that's kind of exciting that, that we could see, um, some developments with that in the next 12 months. And if that interests the city and council, um, you let me know if you want me to keep pursuing it. And also, if you guys are interested, we can make arrangements to have you go down and look at it. It's, it's, it's pretty amazing.
I'll, oh, never miss a chance to see an auto clave. The, uh, thanks for taking the time to answer that sort of futurist, uh, save the world question. The, uh, Jermaine, to your guys' presentation here, I, I think, um, as a user from a business, uh, in the construction field, I thank you for your, your adaptation to the shift in the market. I think you guys did it with the plum, uh, as a frequent user. This, what you have laid out all makes sense and, and to meet the demand and, and also continue on your path as, as the franchise holder. It, it's all, it's all good. I think specific to those three questions that I think, um, that, or the, I've met those Chapul guys and heard their story about that. And that's, that's in that sort of recology diagram of, of circling things around. That's really bending that food waste back into fuel. Um, and so that, those guys are real save the world guys. And so I would say if you have the opportunity, you know, I read about like Klotzup County and other waste streams that are, that are doing that kind of stuff and I, I get a little jealous and I think, you know, McMinnville should be leading, leading the way on, on some of that stuff. So, so those are, those projects I think are super encouraging for you guys to be able to, to endeavor to do. So you'd have my support in that, um, in those endeavors. So, uh, appreciate it. Keep up the good work and thanks for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for us?
Uh, go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, one that I forgot, uh, I was just curious with the abnormalities of, you know, out-of-area haulers coming in, dropping heavy loads, if you guys had given any thought to having a like out-of-county license. You know, if they have a driver's license that's from out of county, that they're going to pay a, a surcharge versus the, the rates for the local ratepayers? So local people aren't subsidizing out-of-area dumper?
This, uh, this rate will do that. This rate, they won't drive two hours to come pay the same rate they could pay down the street, uh, especially with fuel right now. So I feel confident that that's going to, we're going to see those loads disappear immediately as soon as they find out. But it's something we can definitely look into in terms of, uh, asking where the load came from.
Well, and I think right now when we're looking at the, uh, yard debris, we've got stickers on our vehicles that, uh, allow us to know local, uh, individuals that drop off and those from out of area drop off too.
Yep, uh, yes.
Did that answer the question for you, Adam?
Yeah, more than anything, I just wanted to make sure, like, moving forward, if we're going to see rate increases, you know, every two to five years, like we do on the, on other things, that if there still is out-of-area stuff that we address that first before we put additional burden on the local ratepayer to subsidize that out-of-area ratepayer.
Agreed.
Good, good, good point, Adam, and I think the council would be all behind, you know, treating the residents within the community differently than those coming from outside of our area. Any other questions?
I would just add one thing from our side is that, um, one of the reasons we wanted to get in front of you guys and, and give you this explanation is you're going to get a lot of these calls. We know that. So we want to arm you with some truths here. Uh, and then if there's anybody you want us to talk to, don't hesitate, right? Get it, get them our way and we'll have a chat with them. And we can do tours. We love tours at the transfer station so people understand it.
Yeah, Chris, uh, from my perspective, uh, uh, Councilor Chinowith and myself had an opportunity to take a tour of the facility and, and it answers so many questions, uh, seeing is believing kind of what you're going through. And I've had an opportunity to go numerous times out of recology and continue to be amazed of how you, how much you do with so little space and, and growing and, and, uh, and your, um, your focus on zero waste. In reality, your, your, uh, strategic plan falls right in line with a community, the size and the, um, the mentality of a McMinnville. So again, you've heard it numerous times this evening, but we truly see you as a partner. Uh, we see you as a entity that's employing and just doing the kinds of things in this community that need to be done. So again, uh, Chris, it was great to meet you the other day and we look forward to having, uh, you onboard. And then we've worked with Dave and Ernie and some of the others, uh, for so long. I mean, Nick's on the line. So again, uh, just from my perspective, we thank you for the partnership that you provide.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. I appreciate it.
Great. Okay, let's, uh, let's move to our second, uh, our second item this evening. And that's going to be a discussion on the service development fees or the SDCs. We've had this discussion this eve, before, and I think we've got some updated information tonight, things that we need to be thinking about. And so I will turn the time over to our city attorney, Amanda Gall Hinman, to introduce the topic. And, uh, we've got some good slides and, and a, a report that goes along with this. So Amanda, good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you too. Thank you, Mayor Hill. Um, uh, I am going to share my screen here real quick. So tonight we're going to be discussing, um, system development charges particularly related to methodology policies. Tonight, I also, in attending the work session are Heather, Susan and Anne, um, as the department heads in charge of these systems and master planning efforts. So, um, if you want some real-world examples of what's going on with SDCs and how the methodologies really impact what we can do, they're here to answer any questions. I'll also note, um, I am battling a cold right now, so I've also asked them that if I end up needing to take a cough break, that they would step in for me, um, and, and take over for a little bit while I compose myself. So tonight the city is, um, we're going to be talking about system development charges and the SDC, the methodology policies behind them. As the city prepares to undertake several key facilities' master planning efforts, staff is seeking council feedback regarding policies that will impact the scope of the methodologies used to update the city's current system development charges or SDCs. So, um, for a bit of a background, if you're wondering why I'm here talking to you about it, I revised the League of Oregon Cities Model SDC Code when it was updated in 2019. And I also updated the local SDC code in my prior job. I was the lead counsel on the most recent SDC litigation matter to make its way to the Oregon Court of Appeals, where I successfully defended local SDC code. So I've spent a lot of time with state law concerning SDCs. So a roadmap for tonight's discussion, we're going to go, um, over the purpose of this SDC discussion that we're having tonight. Um, I'm going to provide some background information about SDCs for those who maybe aren't as familiar with, um, what they are or how they're used. Um, we're going to discuss McMinnville's current SDCs. And then, um, where we want to spend the majority of the time, particularly getting council feedback, is concerning two SDC policy questions, those being what SDCs should we be charging? And the methodology that we should be using particularly with regard to cost recovery. One thing I did want to also note is that staff does intend to come back for another work session on SDCs to discuss some of the, um, policy considerations surrounding administration of SDCs. But those aren't, um, those questions are not as timely as the SDC policy considerations around methodology since those are particularly important for the master planning efforts that we're doing right now. So, oop, go back. So the purpose for this discussion is first is our current SDC cost recovery, um, our current policies is that we don't currently, um, we don't currently undertake full cost recovery for our SDCs. So that means that what's going on right now is taxpayers and race, ratepayers are subsidizing new developments' impact on our citywide infrastructure or alternatively, um, projects that are in our master plans are not getting completed. So staff is bringing this discussion about SDCs forward so we can strategically plan for upcoming SDC updates that will result from new and updated master plans. Counselor Minkie, you have a question?
What is the current rate that we are, uh, recovering? I know I change it on an annual basis or increase it slightly, but what, uh, does it depend on the type of SDC or how does that work?
It does depend on the type of SDC. So right now we're getting zero cost recovery for stormwater and water because we don't charge an SDC at all for those. For parks, we're getting about 50% cost recovery. And for transportation, I think we're, I don't, it's not an exact percentage, but specific projects were pulled off of the SDC methodology. So it was about 24 million and I think we collect the equivalent of about $19 million worth. So we are short also on our transportation SDC. I don't know for sure on our sanitary sewer SDC, um, and I don't know if Anne, Heather, Anne or Heather might know that, but definitely at least with transportation, with the other four, we are not getting full cost recovery right now. Thank you. So, um, so over the course of next, the next several months, uh, several staff, uh, staff are doing several master plan updates. And, um, particularly, we're going to be doing the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. That is, um, the RFP process is currently underway right now, so a contract for that master plan will be coming soon. We've got the Transportation System, um, Master Plan, the Transportation System Plan Update, a Stormwater Master Plan Update, and then the Wastewater Conveyance and Wastewater Reclamation Facility Master Plans, all slated to happen in the next, to begin the process in the next several months. And those all have implications for including capital projects that would be SDC eligible. So by getting, um, policy guidance from council, staff can better structure both the master planning effort and the SDC methodology work to be in line with council's goals and vision for SDCs. So what are SDCs? SDCs are fees that are charged to new development to help fund the construction of capital projects to meet the needs to created by growth. They are generally charged when a developer or property owner obtains a building permit, causes increased usage of a capital improvement, or connects to a capital improvement. A system development charge. A system development charge has two components to it, an improvement fee and a reimbursement fee. An improvement fee is, can only be spent on capacity increasing capital improvements identified in a master plan or a capital improvement plan. A reimbursement fee is charged for the cost of existing infrastructure or infrastructure under construction if there is excess capacity in that existing infrastructure to accommodate new growth. Revenue from reimbursement fees may be used for capital improvements associated with the system for which it is assessed, including and for both improvement fees and reimbursement fees, the expenses relating to paying off a debt from the capital improvement, SDCs can be spent on that as well. SDCs cannot be used for operations or routine maintenance of a system, and they must be tied to the impact of new growth on certain citywide systems. State statutes limit the types of capital improvements for which SDCs can be assessed. They may be assessed for capital improvements for water, sanitary sewer, stormwater, transportation and parks and recreation systems. Back in 1989, the state passed, it's the SDC statutes that are found in ORS 223297 through 223314. So they generally guide on how local governments can utilize and structure SDCs. And then local code also further codifies how SDCs are structured and governed. And ultimately, the purpose of SDCs, as I've stated, is to assess new development for its impact on citywide systems. So how you get to creating an SDC is there are two key steps. First, the city must adopt a capital improvement plan or master plan. The master plan, among other components contained in it, explains the project, projected future growth of the city, and then the projects needed to accommodate that growth. So that project list will include estimated costs, the timing when the project is likely to occur, and the percentage of that project that is SDC eligible, meaning the percentage that is attributable to meet the needs of new development. That project list will result in a total cost of the projects, and when then applying the percentage that's attributable, attributable to new development, the total cost of those projects that is SDC eligible. So then once that project list from a master plan or capital improvement plan has been adopted by council, the second step is to then develop a methodology to determine from that total SDC eligible project cost, how much is the per unit cost going to be? So for example, the transportation SDC methodology takes the total project costs that are attributable, attributable to new development and divides it by the estimated new PM peak hour trips attributable to that new development to arrive at a fee that is the per PM peak hour trip. So if a new business is going to generate four new PM peak hour trips, that per unit cost would be multiplied by four to obtain that business's, that business's transportation SDC. The methodology has to also explain the basis for the charge because it is something that has to go through a public process and can be challenged by, can be objected to and challenged. So the methodology needs to explain how it gets to the, how it justifies that charge. The methodology has to be adopted by council, and then the city charges, collects and spends those SDCs on projects that are on that project list that the council adopted. So then, once the SDCs are collected, like I said, they can be spent on projects that are included in an adopted capital improvement plan and the project list. Reimbursement fees in particular can only be spent for, can only be charged for capital improvements already constructed or under constructed, under construction. But once they're collected, they can be spent on any capital improvement that's associated with the system for which they're, they're collected. So reimbursement fee on transportation, the reimbursement fee component of a transportation SDC can be spent on any transportation capital improvement project. It obviously wouldn't go to a specific project because it's collecting for a project that's already been constructed. Improvement fees are spent only for capacity increasing capital improvements. We can repay debt with SDCs. You cannot use SDCs from one fund to pay for a capital improvement in another fund. So a transportation SDC cannot go pay for a parks, a parks project. And you can also use SDCs to comply with SDC statute. So this is really important because it gets incorporated into the methodology and something we're gonna be talking about a little bit later when we get into the policy discussion, is that you can, when you set up your SDC methodology, you actually can include costs associated with developing the master plans, developing the methodology, accounting for SDC expenditures and related staff time as part of that SDC that you're collecting. So when we talk about what cost recovery looks at, looks like, a component of the cost recovery is this administrative component of complying with the SDC statutes. So looking at McMinnville's SDCs, these are the current, the current costs that we charge. So the transportation SDC is about $2,700, the sanitary sewer fee is about $3,500, and the parks SDC that's charged only to residential development is about $2,600. We don't, like I said, we don't charge anything for water or stormwater. So like I said, or like I may have indicated, McMinnville's SDCs do not currently seek full cost recovery. So for example, the parks SDC, like I mentioned, when it was last updated, when the methodology was last updated in 1998, the council elected only to collect 50% of the costs attributable to new residential development. It also elected to increase, to get to that, the rate that was established in that methodology, the council elected to stagger that increase over a period of, of years. So incrementally increased over three years. So during the initial years, we didn't even get to 50% cost recovery at that time. So the total current SDC assessment for residential development is $8,857 in McMinnville. This chart below is what we have collected in the last few years on our SDCs. So you can see that particularly in FY 19 and 20, we collected significantly more due to some residential development. And I would anticipate as other area planning efforts in our UGB are underway and development starts to occur, that we may see some additional increases in overall collection of SDCs. So this is McMinnville's SDCs compared to other cities. This is looking at what is charged for a residential, for a house being built. So generally, SDCs are gonna be higher for business or commercial or industrial development. But the reason I wanted to draw your attention to this is, you know, for example, Newburgh charges right now 25, almost $26,000 per house for its SDCs while the, while McMinnville's charging about $9,000 for its SDCs. So quite a bit of a range, I think, and I also included in the council packet some information that came out of the SDC study that was conducted by the League of Oregon Cities of several rates of other cities as, to show some comparables of where McMinnville stacks up compared to other cities charging SDCs. Yeah, Counselor Garvin?
In this graph, there's the, the three, the three that you've broken out, transportation and, and parks, or is this their city as a whole regardless of what they're for?
Right, it's their city as a whole. So like, for example, if you look at the, most of these cities charge across all five. They charge all five SDCs, which is partially the reason why ours is so much lower. And in that chart that was provided in the council packet, it includes all five of them. So you can see the ones, because I think there was, maybe it was Grants Pass, but there was one other one that also didn't charge some of the fees. So it does break them out per, per charge. So you can look at that and, and see, you know, where there's cities that maybe don't charge all of them.
Oh yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Gary, did you have a question?
Yeah, since the train stopped at the station for a second. This wa, this chart makes sense. Do we have a good idea of sort of per cost, other charges that are associated with building units, I think mostly probably in the utility realm, right? Like some jurisdictions, I think Westland or Lake Oswego are like, to, to, to have the privilege to have our water, right? We charge you a water meter fee of $10,000. And I know that's more utility thing, but I think it's helpful and we, and when we think about the overall cost to build a house where if, if, you know, Redmond is 16,000, but it's a, but it's a $20,000 water meter and a $20,000 transformer for your house, that's a total package that, that helps to be taken in context. Is there, and not, not now perhaps, but maybe as we get further down this discussion, I think sort of maybe some of the intangibles at least that we could use to compare in addition to these are, are helpful too.
Yeah, yeah. So I think what you're getting at is kind of like when you go get your building permit, right? There's a whole host of fees in addition to SDCs that you're paying besides just, besides the SDCs. So it's an, an overall, overall larger number, and what does that look like comparatively?
Right.
Across different jurisdictions?
And I understand that, that would be, yeah, exactly. Just in, to, to understand the burden on, if, if part of our discussion, I think, will be what's the impact to the development community? We, we have to make that decision in context of all of those charges that they're getting charged, while I still understand that the water meter fee is to do exactly what we're doing, but in not, where they're not offsetting the roads, they're offsetting the actual infrastructure for the water in, right? The, the power company's gonna charge the, the actual infrastructure to offset providing power to that, and they have a methodology for why they're charging that, but just it helps in context of everything a developer homeowner's gonna write that check to, to, to build the house.
Yeah, exactly. So that is something, I, I didn't do that analysis for this, obviously, but that is something that we could see about pulling together. I know just anecdotally, because I did it, you know, for example, in Wilsonville, and one of our new residential developments that I worked on while I was there, they had additional streets and parks, a supplemental fee that was about $20,000 in addition to these SDCs. So building in a particular residential development there was way more than that, and that's what several jurisdictions, particularly in the metro area have done, is they've gone to, like kind of what you're getting at is these additional other fees that are SDCs that show it, you know, increase the cost of, of the construction.
Interesting. So not, not an SDC, but just an additional fee?
Right.
Okay.
Specific to that particular development.
Got it. Thanks.
And when they go to the additional fee structure, Amanda, does it just allow them full flexibility? It's just a general fund fee and so they can use it however they want without SDC ramifications or?
It's a, it, that one is structured as a specialty fund, so it has to be spent on those specific projects that are tied to that specific development. So it wa, it was a separate fund that was set up and paid into by those, that supplemental fee. And I believe Bend did something similar after we, after Wilsonville did it, a similar thing for one of their developments as well. And I've seen it also out in, out near like Aloha where you see a lot of development going on out there, where there's not as much SDC support for building roads and the like, is that you'll see a lot of the supplemental fees that are specific to those, to the residential areas being developed.
Question, Amanda?
Go ahead, Sal.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. The supplemental fees, do they, do you find, Amanda, that they tend to be for road infrastructure or sewer infrastructure to meet the needs of some particular subdivision that, that wouldn't otherwise get mad? I mean, I heard that's what you were saying, but do you have a sense of the, the kinds of projects that, that usually entails? Is it, is it normally those two categories or is it other things?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, so generally what it is, is, you know, maybe there's some SDC eligibility, but it's not enough to actually do the full construction. And so, but the full construction is needed. And so it's a way to recoup those costs and get that infrastructure built. But yes, so it's usually sewer, roads, parks, those kind of things that are specifically needed for that area of development.
Yeah, I, I just, I guess I'll just make a general observation. I've been very concerned about the insufficient investment into various aspects of our capital construction, particularly parks, stormwater, where it, which has zero transportation. So I guess I'm favorable towards having new construction pay for itself rather than relying on the existing tax base to pay for that, the, the infrastructure development that comes with that new, new construction. So just a general perspective. And then I'm just really surprised at how much below we are all of the other jurisdictions, even in just the areas where we charge these fees. We're among the lowest in, you know, we only charge for parks, sewer and transportation SDCs. And we're near the bottom in all three of those categories. You know, I struggle to find a comparable to us that's, especially for parks, that just really sticks out like a sore thumb and it becomes clear why we're kind of behind the eight ball in terms of funding those services which our, our public really wants. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Amanda, and maybe Heather could weigh in on this, and it kind of goes off to some of the comments that Sal had. You know, I, having served on the council for so long, I know part of our, our, our thought process was to have SDCs at a lower rate that made homes much more affordable in McMinnville. But, you know, over the years, as I look, homes are not any more affordable and taxpayers are carrying more of the burden of capital improvements in the area of whether it be parks or transportation or, or, or sewer. And so just to give a historic perspective on that, could we talk a little bit about that? And now knowing that most of our housing is being built from builders outside of our, our own area, where before, many years ago, it was primarily done by local contractors. So I don't know if that is formulated into a question, but it's a, it's a, it's a, a thought process. I think we, we need to update as, as Sal says.
Yes. Yeah, that's, Mayor, the struggle that, that policy consideration and that struggle is so on par with, with what jurisdictions are dealing with across Oregon in particular with the housing crisis that we're facing, right, is, is building, I'm gonna say lowercase affordable housing, meaning not something that's part of a federal program where there's, you know, some tax benefit, is that a developer is of course going to work to recoup their costs, but they will take whatever the market is willing to pay. And so if the mark, even if SDCs are low, that doesn't necessarily translate into a house then being priced lower. The house is going to be priced based on the market. So when we talk about, on the next slide, when we get into policy considerations, there are some considerations about subsidizing SDCs to promote certain types of development that we may want to see. And that's where you can get into some discussions about, like I talked about the capital A affordable housing, which we already do, but you can incent, potentially incentivize some other types of development that by lowering SDCs. But yes, what, what has happened is, what cities have done that have tried to keep their SDCs low to encourage development is that generally what you see happen is projects aren't then able to be done because we don't have enough revenue to construct the projects. And also, we can't control what a house is sold for. So.
Yeah, and I just wanted to follow up on that. So Amanda's right, housing is a commodity, and the home builders are always arguing that the SDCs are increasing the cost of housing. But housing, housing is a market rate. And so when you're in a situation like McMinnville where you have much more demand than supply, it's not being determined by the SDC and permit fee cost what the final price per square foot is. It really is a market rate comparable. Where you have an opportunity to make some difference is when you do something like what McMinnville has done, which has said, we will exempt SDCs if you're willing to go into a deed restricted program that, that requires this home to be kept as affordable housing for a certain amount of time, serving, you know, households of 80% AMI or less. And so that's deed restricted, and we can control the, how that is, how that is playing in the market. The other thing I would say about SDCs is when homes transact, the, the cost of construction for that home in that market is a one-time transaction. And so as the homes continue on the market and continue to transact, that savings in SDCs, let's pretend that it, there really is a savings and it transfers down to the consumer, that, that savings in the SDC doesn't transfer over the lifetime of that housing product because the housing product is reacting to the market as well. So. Cause the housing product is reacting to the market as well. So I know that that's a common argument, but I haven't seen in studies that bear that out, except for where you can actually do deed restrictions on the housing product.
Yep.
Thanks for your insight, both of you. It, uh, I think it gives some contextual, um, information for our discussion later. Uh, Adam, your hand is up. You may have not taken it down from our last.
Yeah, uh, I, I do. And I want to just.
Go ahead, Zach.
Don't want to waylay this, but this is good stuff. And actually Heather, Heather's question, follow-up question to Heather's answer, if I may. Um, in the deed restriction and in the, in the, in the sort of, um, you know, creation of the, of the carrot, if you will, to get where, you know, to, to put the thumb on the scale or whatever, right? To say, yeah, here's our SDC fee, but if you want to do this really social good thing, we'll waive that. In context of this discussion of going from an 8,000 anywhere up to be a Wilsonville or a Lake Oswego, would it, would it stand to reason that that actually becomes more of a thumb on the scale? When you say, hey, instead of paying, uh, $43,000 for the privilege of building this home in McMinnville, we could waive that or some percentage or a large portion of that if you do what you talked about. Is that more valuable? Now, it would stand to reason that that's a more valuable proposition?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, again, it depends. I mean, McMinnville's a tough one right now because our, our prices have escalated 25% in a year's time. And so, and it's done that twice now over the last two years. So, you know, the supply and demand issue here is playing itself out in the market. So I don't know how much of a carrot that is or is not. But as, as supply and demand becomes more equalized, as the, if the carrot gets bigger, obviously it's a larger incentive. There is management of housing product that's be restricted, um, that needs to come into play because we're requiring them to certify who they're selling it to and if it resales, who they're selling it to. So, you know, it's, developers need to weigh it out. Um, but it, to me, within the SDC discussion, if we really want to, um, assume that the, that the incentives of having lower SDCs or exempting SDCs is creating affordable housing, in my opinion, the only way we can really be confident that that's occurring is when we're in this deed restricted program.
Right. Uh, yeah. So it'll always be a, it'll always be a, okay, what, how much can I make? And when it tips over to the other way, this just is a, a big weight that we can put on the good side of the scale and hope that the market helps us. But okay, got it. Thanks.
And I'll, I'll, Council Gary, by just saying sorry, Amanda, um, by just, if we do move forward with inclusionary zoning programs as part of our annexation agreements, that's when these SDC exemptions really come into play because as we are saying, you're required to provide affordable housing. And you can provide affordable housing for what we call workforce housing. So that's 80% to 120% AMI. And typically that's, that's market housing on the lower end. So build the lower end market housing. Or you can build subsidized housing at 80% AMI or less, and we can come in with this incentive to help you do that.
Understood. Thanks.
Yeah. And the only two additional things that I'll note is, um, where, one, where I've seen this, uh, where I've seen these types of programs, uh, really successful is when you have developers who, a residential developer that's building a lot of homes. So they're spreading, like, they're going to be making an income, you know, across mul, many, many, many homes. And since we're seeing in McMinnville that we are having sort of these larger developers come in, I could see that being something that's attractive to, you know, these larger developers that are going to do, you know, 200, 500 homes, whatever. Um, and then the second thing that, uh, I wanted to note was, I forgot it. So maybe it'll come back to me, but if not, that's it.
Uh, Amanda, uh, Adam has his hand up. Adam?
Yeah, um, I might be jumping the gun here, but it might be on the next slide. As far as what this could affect on our on fund deficit, um, for what we're currently funding, for master planning, things like that. Maybe the question for Jeff, but where, where would that put us if we are? I guess it depends where we land, but if we went up, if we doubled our current SDC fees, just as a hypothetical, what, what would that do for our general fund deficit? And does that move the needle a little?
I don't, I, I can't see Jeff on my screen, so I don't know if I was looking.
I, I'm, I'm here, Amanda.
Okay.
Thanks, Council Garvin. I, I, I don't think there's really much of a direct impact. Uh, we're, we're, while we're using some general fund staff to do this work, we're also paying for the work, uh, from our, uh, largely from our, um, SDC reserves because master planning is an eligible, um, cost for systems development charges. So there's not a, there's not a hard draw on the general fund for this planning work that we're talking about. And the restrictions for use on SDCs are directly related to capital system improvements, which again, the general fund, uh, doesn't carry right now.
And I, if I may, I might, I might be speaking out of turn, but both Jeff and Jennifer can, you know, virtually throw something at me if I'm incorrect in this. But for example, like the fact that we don't have a stormwater SDC, that means that any capital improvements are probably being paid by ratepayers and by, and/or by taxpayers. So that would be more of an example, I would say, of where potentially an SDC could, you know, be somewhat of a relief valve, maybe not on the general fund, but at least maybe potentially on some, on, um, the ratepayers potentially.
And, and just, just to follow that example, that's actually a great one, Amanda. Um, you know, that we, we do pretty limited work in terms of storm drainage, uh, work. And, and, and what we do, we either carry in our, um, sewer fund or we carry in our street fund, depending on what the activity is. And so it's, that storm drainage utility work that we do, while fairly limited, i- is basically being subsidized by other related utilities where the, the, the costs are allowable. Uh, for instance, we can streets, we can sweep streets with street funds. But we could also use storm drainage funds to pay for street sweeping because it keeps debris out of the storm drainage system. So there are some activities that we can use multiple funds for because we don't have a storm drainage utility. We are really subsidizing those activities, the limited activities that we are pursuing with the other related utilities, specifically sewer and streets.
So we're getting into policy. So how about I go to the policy slide? So like I mentioned at the beginning, staff is seeking council's input on two, um, policy considerations regarding SDCs. Um, and again, this is necessary to help inform the master planning processes that are beginning for the various systems that are SDC, that will have SDC eligible projects. So the first question is about assessing SDCs. And, um, there's two considerations under this. The first is whether to extend parks' SDCs to all new development. And I would note that historically, I think the presumption was that parks are really only ben, only benefit and are used by, uh, residents in the community. But the reality is that parks, trails and open spaces are near businesses and are used by employees and customers of businesses. So the policy question for council is whether it wants to explore assessing a parks' SDC on non-residential development in addition to residential development, um, when we go through this parks' master plan. And then the second one is considering, like, like we've noted, the stormwater, we don't have a stormwater SDC at all. And the question would be, um, particularly since we are doing two master plans. We're doing the, um, water reclamation facility master plan and the, or the wastewater reclamation facility master plan and the wastewater conveyance master plan. Um, I'm, it's very likely there are going to be capital projects that would be SDC eligible if we had a stormwater SDC. So the second question under this is, do we want to look at, um, creating a stormwater SDC? So I'm, I'll, I'll stop there for this first question and get some council input on that.
Uh, Sal, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a comment. I would be in favor of applying the parks' SDC to both, uh, commercial and residential properties and significantly increasing the parks' SDC uh, to meet our future needs. Uh, and secondly, I am in favor of the, uh, stormwater, uh, SDC as well. And I think that that should also be broad-based.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go down to, uh, Zach.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in line with, uh, Councilor Peralta and I'll just add a bigger hammer, full-throated endorsement of the parks' SDCs to all projects. And, and being part of MAC PAC and the exciting projects we have there and endeavoring on the Parks and Open Spaces Master Plan and knowing how far behind we are on that stuff. I think there's a lot coming down on that and soon. So, um, I would be in favor of, of assessing SDCs on both of those.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Kelly.
Hi. I'm totally in favor of extending the parks' SDCs. There's been times there wasn't enough money in the park spend to actually cover some of the debt. So I, that definitely has been also increasing it to 100% if we could. Uh, and definitely the stormwater SDCs. Get my vote on both.
Great.
And, and Amanda, you were talking about on residential and commercial. That's what you mean when, when all new development, right? Cause I know we've, and, and industrial or is that a different designation or would that also be?
Basically, all we talk about it is residential and non-residential. So yes, it would include industrial.
Thanks. So yes.
And then Amanda, just to ask, um, what do other jurisdictions do uh, on the rate of, uh, for, uh, non-residential? Um, is it based off of, uh, valuation of property or some other type of determination?
So generally, um, how parks, parks' SDCs can be, the, the unit that's charged can be different. But generally what you see is it's usually determined by an equivalent dwelling unit. So every, so a house is one equivalent dwelling unit. And then businesses, um, or other types of development will be associate, will get some equivalency for dwelling units. So, you know, a school might have 100 equivalent dwelling units. And so it'll be charged 100 times. I'm just making up an example, but, so that's usually how it's done. Uh, I believe they can also do it on employees. Transportation cannot be charged based on employees, but I think parks can. Um, but that's really hard to do because that changes over time. So usually it's done by equivalent dwelling unit.
Thank you for that insight. I, 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 you know, I see different type of non-residential and we're having some real growth. Let's say in the lodging area where, uh, tourism is coming in and using parks and using our trails and using some of those types of things as compared to a manufacturer uh, that, uh, maybe they use a few of those things for lunch, but not at the same level. So I just want to get some insights of how others are doing that and feeling comfortable with, uh, the rate.
And that would all be part of the methodology, like tho, those types of discussions that you're talking about? You would see that as part of the methodology?
I, if, if I may, um, Mayor, I'd, I'd like to just comment on that.
Sure.
You know, I was, I was born and, and raised in Boulder, Colorado, which is a city that has massively invested in their parks and recreational infrastructure. And I think what they found in that community is that, um, it's a lure for businesses to improve the quality of life for residents. So in, in my view, um, one justification for, um, extending the parks', um, SDCs to, you know, all businesses and actually having the rate not favor necessarily one type of business over another is just that it's a, it's a recruitment tool. Having a, having a nice quality of life in the city uh, helps people to bring, helps businesses to bring new talent. And, uh, and, and then when, when they are here, it improves the quality of life in the community. So I just think that there's not really a good reason to, to, to have a lot of variation, you know, among commercial rates, because I just think it can get arbitrary pretty quick.
Yeah. It all goes back to the livability. And when you have livability, you have residents, you have, you have it all. Any other comments?
The only other, the only other person I haven't heard from, um, is Council, our Council Garvin and, um, Councilor, uh, Dropkin. And I don't know, I don't want to put them on the spot if they don't want to weigh in, but if they do, I'd be happy to hear what they have to say.
I'm generally, um, in the same camp of what's been said, so I'll save my breath for sake of redundancy. I could make more examples that underline, uh, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. And Adam, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I'm generally in support of everything that's been said and, uh, definitely would like to see development pay for their, their weight, given that most of the building that's been going on isn't from local developers. And just with what we're seeing, um, for our ratepayers and whatnot, I'd, I would just like to stop subsidizing out of town developers to build houses in town.
Thank you, Adam.
So I will, thank you and thank you, everyone. So I'll move on to cost recovery. So again, there's several points to this, so I'm going to walk through them and then I'd like to get some council discussion or feedback on it. So the first question is what percentage? And again, for both of these, you, the council will make decisions when the master plans come forward and with the, when the methodologies come forward. So really what we're trying to get here is feedback to help inform what we should be asking our consultants to do. So don't feel like you have to be beholden to what you say here today. It's just to help guide our, our process. So the first thing is what percentage? Essentially, like I noted, we're pretty much not getting 100% cost recovery right now across the board. So, um, is council looking for, um, staff to consider getting 100% cost recovery? Or is, is council thinking, you know, it's probably going to be something less than 100%? And what's included in, and what do you want included in that? Right now, I don't think any of the SDCs that we have include a reimbursement fee. And, um, I know the parks' master plan, the parks' one does have, um, a component for administrative costs, but I'm not sure the other ones expressly call that out. So that's a question as well is, do you want us to look at reimbursement fees and administrative costs? And then policy is about subsidizing certain types of developments, SDCs. So we already do affordable housing, um, but we can incentivize other types of development. The main thing, and this was the note that I forgot, is when we talk about waiving SDCs for types of development, we really have to be strategic about where does that money then come from? Because we still need to pay for those projects to be done. And then the last one is scalability of SDCs. And this is particular for residential development where, you know, when I talk about the equivalent dwelling unit, generally a house is considered one dwelling unit. There is some movement, um, of late of looking at size of house. Um, historically, it has not been a, something that has been looked at for how to calculate SDCs because there's not necessarily a correlation of more people live in a bigger house. Um, but there has been more movement of looking at that more closely. There's some census data that supports potentially looking at, at size of house or number of bedrooms in a home um, to scale residential SDCs. So it's not just one charge for one home. So a lot of things in cost recovery, um, but they will definitely help us, um, as we go, start going through our master planning process. So I'll open it up for council feedback.
Go ahead, Sal.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of thoughts, um, so many options from a policy perspective. Um, I guess generally speaking, I'm in favor of, of 100% cost recovery, certainly for the things that we have been charging SDCs for to this point. And then as you look to adding on new SDCs, I think take that on a case-by-case basis. I'm personally very interested in the idea of having some kind of radiated SDC where if you have really higher-end, uh, residential, that they might, you know, that's really targeting, you know, the, the folks that won't really feel a big impact in the increase of the cost of the house. You know, I, I, it would be nice to kind of have some type of sliding scale that impacts those larger projects more, I think. Um, and then I do agree that there should be incentives to create, uh, more affordable housing in the community. And in those cases, you know, I think waiving significant portions of the SDCs to incentivize that type of housing product, which I know we do some of it already. Um, but I think it would be behooves to expand the categories that we are providing those discounts to so that we could basically try and, uh, improve the conditions for affordable housing in the community. And then have the highest and, and most expensive housing that's developed to kind of help subsidize some of those costs.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to, uh, Kelly.
Well, to just save time and stuff, follow whatever Sal said and it works for me.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, uh, again, to everything that's being said. Um, I, I want to add one thing, which is currently with our exemptions for affordable hous, housing, um, units that are built, that SDC exemption does not extend to parks. We recognized the need. We recognized the need of the parks' SDC to still be met because of its underfunded status. So what I would say is that moving forward, if we're going to be looking at a hundred percent cost recovery on SDCs as it, you know, across the board, that we, or that staff also brings back information about how we might better incentivize affordable housing by it being a complete exemption from SDCs. So that would include what currently is not exempt. So there's a lot of ways around to say what I was trying to get to, but hopefully you got it.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go up to Zach.
Hello. Yes, I am in alignment, and so I'll just stick to things that I could add. I think the cost recovery is, is crucial in any way to get there. That's the method I'd like to see. Scalability of SDCs, I know, I believe that they're in, in the building, structural building code, a building code looks at, at building uses and, and governs building code towards what you're doing in the building. And I'm wondering if there's any scalability for that, especially considering as, as building code does, how hazardous the operation inside the building is. So, right, I'm going to build a glass-blowing factory, and, and that's scary battery, acid, recycling center, or, or higher levels of volatility. I'm wondering, interested to see if there's some certain gradients to that there? If you're, if you're, you know, if you're doing a thing that's going to, that's going to potentially be more hazardous to our citizenry than not, I'd be interested to see if there's, there's any, any one that's done that. Not necessarily interested in being the pioneer of how to address that, but if there are ways, ways that people have, models that people have done to, to look at how hazardous the operation of, of facilities are, could be. And maybe that's usage, usage and tenants versus, you know, what you declare and when you turn in for permit. So I'm not sure if that's relative or not. But, and as far as subsidization of certain developments, I think the more and, and better we could do with affordable housing, I'd be supportive of. I'm also interested in what other jurisdictions are doing. I know certain people have looked at the barren wasteland of options for childcare facilities and have chosen to do pilot programs to subsidize and spur on the development for, for childcare facilities. I know that's a statewide need. I, I believe also it's a market availability issue, that the more spots would be opened, the more choices, the better it is for everyone. Right now, those have been consolidated to churches, because those have massive amounts of room and space and capacity during the work week to take those things on, and, and that doesn't always work for everyone. So just, just the more we could do to, to spur on that development. That's the only other sort of non-affordable housing subsidy that I've, I've come up with, but I'm interested in seeing what other communities are doing and how they're doing it. So, so, so at, at daycare facilities is my specific. But I'm interested in other social good, things like that, that could be helpful.
Yeah, I know another example that I've seen other communities do. So right now, we have a program through our urban renewal agency to provide loans to development. What some urban renewal agencies do is they pay, not as a loan, they pay for a certain percentage of SDCs for development in an urban renewal agent, an urban renewal area. So maybe something to look at. Or if we do a new, if there's a new urban renewal area that's established, you know, that could be something, that's, I've seen other communities do that.
That too. So in overall, citywide, would we be able to incentivize commercial developments with SDCs, like, you know, childcare facilities?
You can do that, yes. I mean, that's a council policy consideration, and that's something you can do. And so the thing that, my point in using the term subsidize is to, is to note that, you know, make sure that we're look, being strategic about where does the money come from then? The other one, and Heather, Heather, I don't know if we, do we currently charge SDCs for ADUs?
That's a great, yes, I do. Well, I'd have to find out, because we don't require separate services for ADUs anymore.
If I remember correctly, we charge them at the end, don't we? Or if it sells, right? Wasn't that a change we made to encourage development of ADUs? There was something about that.
That was the services discussion, that we said, if, there was always the fear that they could subdivide and create two, two parcels with two homes on them. And so we originally were requiring separate services to both units. We don't require that anymore. That in and of itself reduces substantially the SDCs. But transportation and parks, I'm not sure. I'll have to find out and get back to you.
Yeah. So, so that's a, when you look at other communities, one of the things that they do to increase housing is they'll, they subsidize SDCs for ADU.
I will say, ADUs are not used for housing in McMinnville. We're seeing them used as short-term rentals primarily. We, we don't see a lot of ADUs, period, but when we do see them, that's what they're being used for.
How do we, sort of in that area, not ADU area, but just the, how, how does, how do we, how do we or how would we treat other municipalities? Or, or sort of like the school district, county, and things that could be builders or developers in our area? Would those all be same as existing customers who would be treated in our methodology?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so childcare facilities was the only one I would want to add to examining for incentivizing.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go up to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, based on Zach's back and forth there. Can we add additional fees to buildings or properties that are being developed as short-term vacation rentals? To discourage it, further discourage it?
Wait, say, say that again?
You know, I, I mean, I don't know that we know necessarily when a property is being developed, if it's being developed as a, as a vacation rental. But I'm wondering if there's an, an opportunity to add additional fees potentially to those, to just capture additional costs associated with, you know, having a lot of people coming in and out of neighborhoods at those short-term vacation rentals.
When we permit a short-term rental, can we classify it as a change in use from residential to lodging? And now we have commercial SDC counts on it? I think that's what the council is talking about. I do know there's, there's other communities that charge significant fees for the permit of a short-term rental for, for those types of reasons.
I, I think it's not a bad idea, because essentially, you're taking residential, you're taking property out of residential use and putting it into a commercial use. And it seems to me that in McMinnville and other communities around the region, that's one of the most common new categories of, of, of development. And I think it's problematic for us. So I do think that that should be considered, Heather. Thank you for understanding my point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to stop sharing here, so we can see each other more easily. And Counselor Peralta, one of the, so basically, how our code is written right now and how our, and how the SDC statutes, what they allow you to do, is that if there is a change of use... So typically, you pay SDCs at issuance of building permit. That's the most common time that SDCs are paid. But it, our code and the statutes do allow for the collection of additional SDCs if there is an increased demand on the citywide infrastructure. So if we can, we would have to establish, you know, through the methodology, that the short-term rentals cause that increase, that increase impact on our citywide infrastructure. And if, and at that point, we could, if we can justify it, we could charge it.
And then Amanda, if, as Heather says, that if a permit is provided, it moves over to lodging, then it becomes a part of the TTL? And we're getting some income? Yeah, or TLT. Yeah. Let's see, have we heard from Adam on this latest discussion?
Are you talking about what Sal was brought up about short-term rental?
Well, just under, just under the cost recovery piece, I know, I, you may have gone the first one. I don't know. Amanda, do you have input in from Adam? Okay.
So I didn't talk about cost recovery yet. Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of going for cost recovery. What Sal has brought up, I do get this point of view. I just wouldn't want to make it basically impossible to operate a short-term rental, knowing that that property isn't utilized three hundred and sixty-five days a year like a full-time resident is. And so they don't put the demand on city services like a typical residential dwelling would. So I guess there's a yin and yang to that, but I'm happy to unpack that with Sal offline. And I'm not against it. I just have concerns about it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make it clear that the intent was not to, to make it impossible to do those types of rentals, just that as long as we're taking residential property out of circulation for the purpose of commercial, that we should, you know, capture... I mean, I just think we should disincentivize it to some extent. So, thanks, Adam.
Sounds like further discussion around that, that piece, but a, a good discussion. From my perspective, again, I'm in line with full-cost recovery. I think as we're looking at affordable housing, two things that I know we're working on and will continue to work on is inclusionary zoning and then also the construction excise tax to help support affordable housing. I think it goes hand in hand that we do both approaches, SDCs and full recovery, and then giving some benefit to those, those projects that are affordable housing projects. So Amanda, have you gotten the kind of the direction that you need to?
Yes, I, I really appreciate the feedback. And I, I'll speak for the project managers on the master planning projects, but I'm sure they're grateful for all the feedback as well. And like I noted, we will come back with more of the, more policy considerations on the administrative side, which is really where you get into the code. But not necessary for tonight, so trying to keep it a little bit shorter for you all tonight.
Well, again, we've had two good discussions tonight with recologies report and then SDCs. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. I know that it's not just a, an hour and a half discussion, because there's a lot of work that goes in by staff and by council to prepare for these discussions. So again, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn our, our, our work session tonight. Thank you all, and have a good evening.